All right, everybody, fire up your weapons. Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town of Camden Select Board Meeting with the amended agenda dated 3/16/20. Obviously, we have a number of things to discuss. The actions tonight are very limited, but just as an intro, I'd like to, maybe Audra, will you stop by reminding everybody the current tentative position of the town regarding closures and that stuff that you've temporarily posted?
Yes, absolutely. So, as of the close of business today, the town offices are closed to the public, and this closure is going to be in effect until April 1st. We're going to still conduct business remotely, so anybody will still be able to call the town office and, you know, make payment either online or over the phone using credit card. You can mail in checks. For anybody who could only pay with cash, we're going to be waiving any interest for taxes because taxes are due on the 15th of April, sorry, 16th of April. Hopefully, by that point, we'll be reopened, but since we don't know if that's going to be the case or not, if there are people who aren't able to get in, we won't be charging interest for those who can only pay through cash. If you visit our website, www.camdenmaine, maine spelled out, .gov, or call the town office, that's the best way to conduct business with the town.
Can I give that number?
Sorry, the number is (207) 236-3353, and you'll be sent through the phone tree that'll get you to the office that you need to access. The Planning and Development Office is going to accept and process permits as well as payment for permits, and that will be through email or mail. And our code enforcement officer will continue to conduct inspections. He's planning on a schedule of Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays for inspections. Our assessors are also going to continue to conduct inspections. They're not going to be entering homes, but they'll be doing, you know, drive-by inspections or outdoor inspections. The Opera House has canceled all events through to the end of April, and for more information, you can visit their website, which is www.camdenoperahouse.com. So, the Camden Public Library is also going to be closed till April 1st. They do offer some services remotely, and for more information, you can visit www liverycamden.org or call (236) 3440. The Camden Snow Bowl is closed for the season, and for more information on that, you can visit www.camdensnowbowl.com. In terms of board, commission, and committee meetings, this meeting, of course, has been postponed until next week, so March 24th, and the plan is that we're going to be setting up a system where the public can remotely view and participate in the meetings. We would like to urge everyone, if they have any comments on agenda items, they can send them through via email, and the comments will be read on the record during the public comment portion of the meeting, or if it corresponds to a particular agenda item at that point.
Especially a public hearing.
What's the email that they should use?
They can use my email address and also select board members, which they can find everybody's email addresses online if they look on the Select Board page as well as the page that has my contact details.
Is that TOC Select Board @camdenmaine.gov email address still?
Available.
We're gonna get it active again, but until that point.
But it hasn't been working?
I don't, I'm just not certain if it is or not.
Try it a while.
We don't send emails to it, but.
You try.
Yeah.
That was a good one. It worked really well before.
It'd be good to have it centralized, but I think, did you mention, I may have missed it because I was looking into my notes, the part about people being able to pay online for various taxes and?
Yes, we did. Yep. We accept property tax payment as well as any registrations for vehicles, boats, all online.
What if you need, like, somebody needs a copy of, like, a proof of registration, or they need, like, a copy of their birth certificate or something, is there any way they can get that, or?
Yes, absolutely. For all vital records, any of that information, we can, you know, provide, either mail it, email it, any of those.
Okay, so if somebody just calls the town office or emails, they can?
Yep, so even though the plan is all, the majority of staff who work in the town office are going to be working remotely, their phone, the phone system here is still connected so that they can receive calls working at home.
Right.
So, we'll be able to do all business that we normally do.
Right. I would imagine just a forewarning, and any record request may take a little bit longer to get returned than it normally might if somebody's not in the office. They'd have to, unless it's electronic already, then it's easy.
Yeah, it depends if they want it something by email or mail.
Okay.
I did just test that email address, and it works great.
It's T.
TOC.
Town of Camden, TOC.
Select Board, all written out, @camdenmaine.gov.
Then, fullmaine.gov. All the whole words, right.
TOC Select Board @camdenmaine.gov.
We'll post that as a link on the website, too.
Okay, great. That's a great idea.
Reason there needs to be so.
That's a great idea. Is there anything else in that list, Audra?
So, the Budget Committee meeting for Thursday has also been postponed until 3/26. Same idea, we want to set up a system where Budget Committee members and the public can participate remotely, so we're looking into options for remote participation of both, you know, committee members or select board members who so choose to participate remotely, so they can do that, as well as the public being able to view and comment at the same time. All other non-essential committee, commission, board meetings are canceled for the next two weeks.
That's gonna be a little bit of a tough one with the Budget Committee.
It is.
It is.
We lucked out a little more.
Yeah, we could.
And I mean, in a very well, it very well may be that we can't find a good solution for that, and we need to do something like holding the meeting up in the Opera House where we can spread out.
Everybody can spread out by 50 feet, or some big number, yeah, that makes sense.
Depending on what, I mean, if it's, the majority of them are really gung-ho about trying to use Zoom or something, or, but, just depends on what the appetite is for that.
It gets.
I think it sounds fun, but.
I think it does, too. I think it does, too.
We have some good options.
You gotta look at the lemons making lemonade, sometimes these things could give us options that we never had before, and we do live in an electronic era, and we should be taking more advantage of it, and we really haven't had the opportunity to jump into that yet.
I think if anything, this shows that remote participation in meetings, it won't be the end of the world.
Correct.
But we'll see.
Right.
If we're not, right?
Anything else, Audra?
So, I guess, you know, like I said, all of our employees are still going to continue working, however, we are encouraging everyone who can to work from home. So, the majority of people who work in this building or other administrative areas will be working remotely. Departments like Public Works and the Public Safety, Fire, and Police, they'll be coming in as normal, in their normal shifts. They're going to be divided up a little bit differently so that they, there isn't as much exposure to one another, so in case somebody's ill, it doesn't make the whole department ill, and we don't risk losing, you know, all of our staff in one area, because for a department like Wastewater, that would be, that would be a bad situation. So, our department heads have protocols in place for making sure that that doesn't happen. And I would say, in terms of, you know, emergency management, more broadly from a community-wide perspective, we're trying to expand our Good Morning Camden program, so that was a program where every morning, the police department calls in on elderly or homebound residents who might need somebody to check in on them, and the idea is that if this progresses a little bit more, and there might be homebound people who need some extra support, you know, supplies dropped off to them, or, you know, whatever the case may be, we have police officers and fire department personnel who can assist in doing that, and also, you know, taking the names of other people who, you know, they might be immunocompromised or have other reasons why, you know, they can't leave their homes to get supplies. So, we're asking that people call the police department. Jeff Sukforth is going to take names and numbers and find out, you know, what people may need if they've organized, you know, with a local business to have, you know, some supplies, they can help with, you know, dropping them off, that sort of thing. And we'll see how that goes. If that gets to be something that's heavily needed and utilized, we might have to reach out more broadly in the community for other volunteers to help with that, but at this stage, we're, you know, we're able to help with the people that we have available.
Can I make a comment about that? That would, what we're not asking people to do is do not call 911 for that service. That's emergency only. Call the regular number for the Camden Police Department. Do we have that? Somebody have that handy?
I knew you.
Jeff Sukforth commented on our Facebook post, so between the hours of 8:00 and 4:00, you can call (236) 7953, and that'll get you right to the Public Safety Building. Outside of that, I think the best thing to do if you needed something urgently would be dispatch, so the (236) 3030 number would work for that.
It's important to call those numbers. Those would work.
Important to call those numbers and not 911.
Right.
I think 3030 is the same.
It'll get you to the same place.
But, right, during the daytime, it's always a little jarring when you think you're just, you just want to call the police department, you end up with dispatch, but, so, avoiding, you can call 7953, we'll avoid that during business hours.
From 8:00 to 4:00?
I believe 8:00 to 4:00 is.
Probably.
Yeah, when Jeff is there.
Great, great. Okay, that.
And I'd say, last of all, just continue to monitor the town's website and Facebook page. If there's any additional information, we'll post it there so everybody's aware of what the town's doing, or any other, you know, important information that's specific to Camden.
Why don't you mention the parking situation?
Oh, yes, yes. So, there's a number of restaurants that are, you know, they need to operate a bit differently now that, I think, I just first want to thank a lot of the restaurants in Camden, they've made a very difficult, but I think, you know, wise choice to limit, you know, public from entering, and they're only doing sort of takeout. So, in order to, you know, make things a little bit easier for all of them while they're trying to adjust to everything that's going on over the next few weeks, we're allowing or being very lenient with the parking permits so that, you know, if they need a few spaces in front of their business to facilitate, you know, takeout, we're making that happen for them quickly. So, just like to encourage any businesses who are looking at that model, get in contact with us, and we'll make sure that they have the necessary permit.
Oh, hold on, so you could, like, take parking spots from being two hours to being, like, reserved for?
They can use them for takeout purposes.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, well, it doesn't have to be limited to restaurants. I mean, I'm trying to think of another example besides a restaurant, but it doesn't have to be limited to that.
Benjamin Brown.
Yeah, I mean, people aren't going to want to buy a shirt and go buy and grab and fly down the street, but.
Never know, I guess, right?
But I think it could apply. That's, that's great. It's kind of a contingency planning that's, I think, that will evolve.
Yes.
And, and I, that's a great segue into, just a brief, Allison.
Or, I don't know if this is in your next, but can, are we looking at all at, I'm sure we are, but, you know, you keep seeing all these headlines about different things that other towns are doing, like civil, you know, declaring a civil emergency and.
Home rule.
Curfews, and, you know, keep everybody off the island, and.
So, fortunately, with our charter, the way that it's written, the only way that the Town of Camden can take that sort of action is through our legislative body, which is town meeting, so we can't take that kind of action as a municipality without convening a special town meeting, which I think, under the current circumstances, as everybody would agree, is not appropriate.
Right, right. Well, I think it segues kind of into, you know, a little bit of, just a brief, just a brief, last few days have been kind of hellish for everybody, you know, schools closing, state stuff, but in the town management form of government, there are more, often more restrictions than there might be seen in a city council form of government. We certainly need to define whether that, what Audra just said, is actually correct or not, about, seriously, but.
Whether there's a way to get around it or not.
Exactly, Allison, that's exactly the point.
There is, there is an option, and it's not, it's not sort of binding like an ordinance, but it does give you the ability to make a statement as municipal leaders as to, you know, the sort of behavior that you want and are expecting, and that would be through a resolve.
Right, and I think that's what I.
There's something about martial law, too.
Well, yes, good question, well.
I did ask the town attorney about it, and he specifically said that.
That's correct, but I think this just segues.
Can we hold a virtual town meeting?
Um.
New law, just kind of said that we could.
Yes, correct, well, that's why I wanted to segue into, you know, just go back.
Not that we want to.
Maybe, a couple of days, you know, everything, everything has been very fluid, everybody knows that. We do have, you know, a form of government, we at least have to understand how it works in detail in these areas. Audra and our attorney got together and talked about this yesterday, most of the day, and put together this element. Honestly, it moved very quickly, very few of us even saw it, but we need to get something in place. None of it's permanent, and you saw it's April 1st, but that could be changed on a whim tomorrow, and, you know, I would pray that that may go the other way, and if we maybe pull it away, that's probably not going to happen, but on the other hand, if things get more challenging as it has in other jurisdictions, we have to be ready with situational planning, and that means if the situation occurs, we need to know the answers to these questions. So, we have a lot of homework to do collectively, the Select Board, the town, so we can look at our options and decide which way we want to go, and if and when something occurs that we have, you know, beyond what we've done to date, but that includes what we've done to date, and it's just, we, let me highlight that for a minute. Yesterday, we did a significant discussion about having, our attorney, about having even the idea of a remote, because it was arguably, we didn't have the right to correct the statute to be able to do that, we had to get. Today, there was significant legislation passed, this is, I think, fast things are moving.
Augusta, right.
Legislation that said, and many elements of it, that have taken some of the heat off of us, and not the least of which we had, what we're doing tonight, but would not have to have occurred based on the legislation that happened today. And that legislation basically said, from the governor and legislature, and Augusta said, yep, towns, you can, you know, you can, you can delay your, a lot of things we're doing right now are backed up by the ballot in June, the secret ballot, and the town meeting, the budget, the hearings we're having on ordinance changes to go to the ballot, but we've given the flexibility to be able to decide to move that if we desire. One, two, there's other, many others in it, but in the town basis, we can, if we don't have a budget approved until we get a town meeting, we can continue with the budget we have right now until such time as we get a new budget approved by the town as required by our charter. It goes on and on with opening up, we don't, one doesn't have to, we don't have, typically, we have to approve a liquor license for some business, because if they don't have it, they can't have liquor delivered. Not that anybody's drinking at bars probably tonight, even though it's St. Patrick's Day, and by the way, Happy St. Patrick's Day, but we don't have to worry about that. So, we're getting relief that we didn't have before, but it's happening very quickly. In that legislation, by the way, there's, you'd be very interested as residents and to read it and check it out, because there are many elements of business included about, businesses don't have to take away persons' sick leave if they decide to stay home and work, and it goes on and on and on, but take a look at that. But the reason I mention that is because, as we were discussing here about, you know, literally about martial law, I mean, we, we've got to be clear, we don't want to be going through homework while we're making a decision to do something with the town. So, we, the next days, have to be working on those elements to come up with the various options that we have available to us, and so we.
Have a range of, like, extreme and not-so-extreme areas.
Exactly, and by the way, if, and also, to a point, to give the public confidence that we're, we are situationally planning, that we, we have some relative triggers that might have us pull the trigger on that item if we get to a certain point. We may be most likely preempted by the state, because they're watching it very carefully, and they have to, and we answer at the end of the day to the state legislature, and we don't. Really, not very happy with having to see what one town's doing and another town's doing something different. It just opens up the debate about what's the good thing to do with a bad, there's no right answer to that at this point in time. Mark?
I just want to say, I've had experience, this is new, this is different, this is unique. It hasn't happened since 1918 is the last time I had a pen, something this massive worldwide. But I've been through, you know, as many people know and I've talked about before, I moved here from Los Angeles, I worked with the LA County Sheriff's Department for 30-plus years, and I went through the Rodney King riots, I went through great LA fires, I went through the big Los Angeles earthquake in 93. I've seen situations like this, and that people rise to the occasion and deal with it, and work their way through it, and come out well on the other side. And I think that we, reason and logic and common sense will offer a lot in how we move forward, and that's what we've been trying to do and look at and think about, and we will continue to do that for the benefit of the town and for us as well, because any decisions we make for the town, we are making for ourselves, and it's important. So, know that, we're talking about it, we're aware of it, we're watching what happens in other parts of the country, we've already made some, I think, some really good decisions about how to move forward, and we will move forward as we adjust, as people do in any tough circumstance that goes on in your life, no matter if it's personal, or large, or professional, whatever it is, and, you know, that's what we're doing.
Bob?
Yes, sir.
Just to be clear about the legislation you're talking about today in Augusta, the example, we're talking about the Budget Committee earlier.
Yes.
If the Budget Committee feels like they don't want to meet for the next couple of weeks, this gives us the flexibility to move town meetings so that we're not up against a backstop.
Yeah, that would have a cascading effect, and would probably require that we consider perhaps moving the date of the secret ballot and town meeting, perhaps.
Right, okay.
But that's, you know, we'll have to.
Give us the ability.
I'd prefer not to do things like that, but that's, but even in, when Audra mentioned earlier, when I say situational planning, for example, very silly, not silly, very important things, when the police department's delivering certain things and helping out, the police department is only so many people, and they can do so many things, so what are we going to do when that load gets to be more than the police department? That should be black and white, that we shouldn't have to worry about whether we're tapping this group or that group to help us out. There are many people who are volunteered, both financially, and I've told, financially and physically, to help. Do we, do we elicit that, do we not? You know, those decisions, we don't want to be guessing when we have to move quickly, that's all, that's the only thing we have to collectively do, and it's going to take some homework in the next days to do that. Allison, I can see your hand go up.
There are a bunch of Facebook groups that have been born dealing with that very thing for this area, one of them, what's it called, Five Town, Five Town something, or the, I mean, people are really, from what I've seen, really eager to, like, look out and.
Engage.
What can I do? I hear about people calling and checking with the police department if there's anything, you know, anybody on that list of, for the Good Morning Camden program that might need a little extra support, and so I think there is a lot going on, and.
And I think we should summarize that for people so they know that that's there, and just be the coordination central for some of this stuff, and, and by the way, it's so difficult to me, I believe, it's so difficult to get information out to all of our residents, because we don't really have a great system of doing. Not everybody reads Facebook, not everybody reads the newspaper, or even the Penn Bay Pilot, and sometimes I got so many things, I don't know which one to read first, but we can try to help some of that, including working with the media. But I think it's important, because I really feel the feedback I get from people, not just from Maine, but around the world, actually, they, they feel like they're, their heads with their chickens cut off, they don't know where things are going, not that anybody does, nobody has a crystal ball, but the governments have been kind of slow at reacting to planning, situational planning. What happens if, you know, the reactivity of some of the cities have shut down, San Francisco, for example, a great one, shut down for two weeks. If they'd done situational planning, they would have been shut down probably three weeks ago, but, you know, hindsight's always 22, I'm not criticizing anybody, it's just we, we just, we just, and also, to Allison, your point, I think the community is engaged, wants to be engaged, and we need to just make sure we know when to raise the trigger for them to be engaged, and who, and how that is. That's, we may have to have a few more meetings than we want to, but that's just the way it's going to be.
I think Audra posted something four hours ago that's been viewed by 1,500 people, just the update on the, you know, the number that you can call if you want the police department to deliver you things.
1,500 people?
Mm-hmm.
Wow, that's great.
So, it's been shared 20 times.
On the Penn Bay Pilot?
No, no, this is, this is just Facebook, this is, I mean, the Penn Bay Pilot, all that's good, too, but.
Oh, okay, okay.
And that, that group that's doing a lot of sharing is called Five Town Samaritans.
I see, I see, that's great.
So, it seems like everybody is in a pretty good position.
My sense of the people in town here, just everything's fairly calm, with a little bit of buying thing going on, but that's just normal, but.
I think everybody's very ready to take care of.
They really are, they've read enough about it to understand that it is a problem, you know, nobody has a crystal ball, we don't know when this is going to end or minimize or its actual impact, which we did, but there is also, what, November, December, January, there's five months of learning in the world today about this, about this virus, start in November.
Five months of what?
Of learning about this virus. I think they're having a real problem internationally, and getting information collected in a place where nobody's leading, nobody's leading, Italy's following its own thing, China did it, Germany's doing it, at least I don't, the WHO should be more engaged, in my opinion, but that's irrelevant at our level here, but I think that, just this kind of thing, that's, we're a small community, we can mobilize quickly if we're just ready to do it, right? I mean, that's a great thing, I don't, I've never lived in a town that's as community-oriented as this town is, and the surrounding towns.
Something else just came in that I'd like to put it out there, too, and I'll put this on the website, but any business that's had to close because of this, if they could get in touch with myself or the Planning and Development Director, Jeremy Martin, you can find our contact details on the website, please reach out to us and let us know, because the Department of Labor is trying to get information on who's had to close and what the impact has been on employees, so they can figure out what sort of assistance both businesses and employees might need.
What about ones that haven't necessarily had to close, but they're just, they're, well, they've, like, I've talked to several businesses that are really concerned right now, they're staying, like, you know, closed stores, and they're staying open very carefully with a set of procedures, but their revenue is down to basically nothing.
I'd say, yeah, anybody who's, any business that.
Economically impacted.
Yes.
Is that an email you got from the state?
Department of Labor.
Can you share that with us?
Yes, yep, I'd be happy to. So, they, and it's also, it's all confidential, so if they reach out and they don't want people to know about their situation, it would be treated confidentially.
Okay.
Well, and I think if you come to this discussion, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of energy to help do what we need to do, and it's going to take a little bit of our time, and I, we'd like to bring to the tables the ideas and present them to the public, maybe, I mean, I would like to think, maybe Tuesday, they may be too early, but if we have to do it at a special meeting, we'll do it at a special meeting. We have to do it whenever it's available, but one more commentary, I just want to, I'm going to forget to get this.
I was just going to say, I want to be careful about talking about hypotheticals too much.
Yeah, no, we can't, we can't at the point, because I, we need, we need all the players in one room, including our attorney, to make sure we don't say something that's, may have to be answered. I don't tend to be, none of us tend to be specialists here, but, but I do, well, before I forget, and I will forget, there is one action item we need to execute tonight, which would be the, the action listed here to move all of the, postpone all the agenda and all the public hearings to a special meeting on Tuesday, March 24th.
Make a motion that we move the agenda and the public hearings from tonight to March 24th.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor? And as I said earlier, this was a real urgency yesterday, it's not quite as urgent today because of legislation, but at least we, at least we follow the rules, and we, we were trying to keep the ordinance on track for, ordinance on track for the June, whatever date the June ballot is, I'm not even remember the date exactly, six, I don't remember, I don't remember.
Second Tuesday.
Okay, thanks, Allison.
Tuesday in June.
And the town meeting.
Second Tuesday after the first Monday, and.
Right, right, anyway, that's, that was the only action, a lot more to come, a lot more discussion to be held, we may have some, I'm not sure, but we don't know yet, public workshops, I say public, I mean, video, videoed to talk about some of this stuff as we, I know that Audrey, you can heard, has already been working on some of the stuff with Bill, including the idea about what the town management from government technically can and can't do, and then we'll investigate whether or not we can get around that somehow, and just dam the torpedoes and go for it, because that's what we have to do, that's what we will do, and we have to protect our residents and everybody around us, and, but in the meantime, we all have to stay healthy and stay safe, and get out there and exercise, and do the things you do, as we do for fun, and stay away from huge crowds, I guess, and all the advice you see online, and we're going to ride through this, that's like everything else, we're going to learn from it.
I make a motion, we adjourn the Select Board meeting.
Second.
Discussion, didn't expect any, all's in favor. Thank you, everybody.